Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for February 27, 2018. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite Mr. George Monroe from Evanston Avenue Baptist Church up to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone would like to join us in prayer, please do by standing, and I do ask folks to remove their hats. Thank you. George?
Shall we pray? Hallelujah. Heavenly Father, again we thank you for the privilege of being here, Lord. I pray that you would be with our mayor and our manager and our commissioners and our clerk, Lord. Protect them at all time and their families, Lord. Be with this meeting and guide and direct it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks much, George. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Garin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hood? Mr. Rinsesabika?
Here.
Mr. Turnquist?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. German?
Here.
Thank you. The Vice Mayor is still under the weather. Somebody take him some chicken soup after this, would you? May we have the consent agenda, please?
Item A: Approval of Minutes, City Clerk. Summary request: To approve the minutes of the February 12, 2018 Work Session Meeting and the February 13, 2018 Regular Meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Item B: Approved Changes to Priority Home Repair and Vinyl Siding Program Rules, Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary of requests: To authorize Community and Neighborhood Services to change priority home repair and vinyl siding programs. Changes are to raise the income limits to the 80% area median income, remove the depreciation of the five-year lien, and lower the service limitation from 10 to six years. Under the current priority home repair program, the application fee is none, and they're proposing to change it to $60 for 51% to 80% AMI. Under the priority home repair program and vinyl siding program, the current liens placed on property is for repairs $3,500 or more, and they're proposing to change that to $1,500 or more. The staff recommendation to approve the request. Committee recommendation: The proposal has been approved by the Citizens District Council at their February 6, 2018 meeting. Item C: Sanitary Sewer Improvements, Department of Public Works. Summary of requests: Authorize staff to sign a professional services agreement. Amendment to the previously approved Oak Grove and Clay Hill sanitary sewer improvement agreement. The $14,900 in additional costs are for survey, drafting, construction, staking, and property iron replacement. This work was not required in the original project scope. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Prine and Newhoff pending commission approval of the second quarter reforecast. Item D: 2018 Dozer Rental for Beach Leveling, Department of Public Works. Summary of requests: Staff is requesting permission to enter into a rental agreement with Contractors Rental Corporation out of Grand Rapids, Michigan for a John Deere 850K WLT dozer for leveling sand at Pier Marquette Beach. Staff recommendation: Approve the request. Item E: 2018, '19, and 2020 Street Sweeping Contract, Department of Public Works. Summary of requests: To award a three-year contract to provide four annual street sweepings to try us services out of Kent City, Michigan. Staff recommendation: Approve the request. Item F: Tahoe Police Cruiser, Department of Public Works Equipment. Summary of requests: The Equipment Division is requesting permission to purchase one Chevy Tahoe from Burgess Chevrolet, the state MI deal contract holder. The price of this purchase is $35,246 coming from the equipment budget. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to purchase one Chevy Tahoe from Burgess Chevrolet. Item G: Fleet Replacement Vehicle, Department of Public Works Equipment. Summary of requests: The Equipment Division is requesting permission to purchase one Chevy pickup truck from Betten Chevrolet, the lowest qualified bidder. The price of the purchase is $33,975 coming from the equipment budget. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to purchase one Chevy pickup truck from Betten Chevrolet. Item H: Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate for 339 Terrace Point Circle. Planning and Economic Development. Summary of requests: An application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate has been received from Amy and William Hosford for the new construction of a home at 339 Terrace Point Circle. The estimated cost for construction is $518,978. The applicant has met local and state requirements for the issuance of the NEZ certificate. Staff recommendation: Approve of the NEZ certificate. Item I: Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate at 329 Terrace Point Circle. Planning and Economic Development. Summary of requests: Application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate has been received from Andrew Majewski for the new construction of a home at 329 Terrace Point Circle. The estimated cost for construction is $395,000. The applicant has met local and state requirements for the state issuance of the NEZ certificate. Staff recommendation: Approve of the NEZ certificate. Item J: Vacation of Market Street between Western Avenue and Terrace Street. Planning and Economic Development. Summary of requests: Staff is requesting to vacate Market Street between Western Avenue and Terrace Street. Staff recommendation: Staff recommends vacation of the street. Committee recommendation: The Planning Commission recommended in favor to vacate the street by a 6-0 vote with three members absent.
Where are we at?
We're done.
We're done?
Sorry.
I got hearing aids. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Warren?
Item B, please.
Yeah, let's look at item J and item K.
Any others? Commissioner Rinsesabika?
Seeing no further items to be removed, I move we approve the consent agenda as read minus items B as in Boy, F as in Frank, J as in Justin.
Support.
I have one more item. F.
You already got that.
I said that.
Oh, you said F. Okay, all right. Yeah, I said F.
Did I miss any other ones?
I don't believe so.
BFJ.
BFJ? Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Rinsesabika. Oh, I don't have a second yet, do I?
I second.
You did. It has been moved by Commissioner Rinsesabika, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item B, F, and J. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor Garin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood, still not here, is absent. Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsesabika?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, Commissioner Warren?
I move to approve the request for changes to priority home repair and vinyl siding program rules.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the changes to priority home repair and vinyl siding program rules. Commissioner Warren? Good evening, Anita.
Hi, everyone.
I appreciated all the extra information. I just have one more question.
Oh.
Are there very many homes that are in any of our historic districts that apply for these programs of assistance that you can think of?
As far as a number, maybe one a year?
Okay.
It's very minimal.
So, in that case, they would be able to, if they didn't have vinyl siding, they would be able to use the money to repair current siding if it was wood? Or no?
Well, it really depends on what the State Historic Preservation Office in Lansing says.
Sure.
So, we take all the information, we go out to see that the house really qualifies to be vinyl sited.
Mm-hmm.
And if it does qualify, then we send every home to SHPO for them to take a look at, and they will tell us. Sometimes it's not in a historic district, but it is site-specific, that it looks historic, and that they don't want to apply vinyl siding to it. And so, there's a process that begins where you can appeal that, but certainly if it's in a historic district, we have to start here locally with our HTC.
Sure. And I was, part of why I was wondering was because at the HTC, so often, income is a limiting factor of keeping a home, preserving its historical features. And so, if they qualified by income, this would be a program that they would, they could take advantage of?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner German?
Yes, just one question. How you doing, Ms. Bailey?
I'm doing fine, thank you.
That's good. I've gotten questions from some citizens who want to apply for this program, and they have older homes, some of them have aluminum siding. Now, does that disqualify them as a...
It does.
Yeah.
So, if your home already has vinyl siding on it, or if it has aluminum, we won't go in and remove that siding and then put new. That's not the intent of the program. It's really to preserve the home and to keep it from being penetrated by the elements. And so, if there's a home that's wood-sided, or asbestos, or it has some other types of siding that is really deteriorated, and isn't holding paint very well, and that Safe Belt has ticketed the home, then we will investigate to see if they qualify for our service and go from there.
What are the qualifications for someone to receive these services?
Well, they have to income-qualify, but they also have to have current insurance on their home, and they have to be up-to-date with taxes. And we're just really wanting to make sure that those things are in place before we send a contractor to the home. I know a lot of times, it's hard to keep up on everything, but when you don't have insurance, we can't really send someone to your home to work.
Right.
It's just not safe. And we certainly don't want to assist families who are in trouble with our county, and they owe taxes, so they have to be up-to-date as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Just to give a little bit of insight, I serve on the Citizens District Council as a commission liaison that oversees these programs. And there was much discussion with regard to your question, or concern at least, with historic homes, that it's not appropriate to put vinyl siding on there. How can these homeowners take advantage of it if they income-qualify? And it was decided, while the name of the program is not being changed, although there was some discussion about changing the name, it's still going to remain the vinyl siding program, but in instances where it is not allowed to put vinyl siding on the home, that this program can be used in those circumstances for wood siding or painting, whatever have you that is required, such that it's in a historic district. So, yeah, there was much discussion about that, and so, they wanted to accommodate, the citizens on that, wanted to accommodate historic homes and other situations that vinyl siding's just not permitted.
Appropriate.
Or appropriate. I did, I was wondering, a couple of the other changes that was discussed at the CDC, Ms. Bailey, if it's not something that we need to vote on here, if you can just handle that administratively?
Absolutely.
Because there were a few items, such as the proposed changes for the program fees on the vinyl siding program. I don't see that in the request. So, is that something, such as the program fee for the 0% to 50% AMI and 250 for the dollars for the 51% to 60%, and $500 for the 61% to 80%? Are those fees changes with regard to the vinyl siding program not needed to come to a vote?
That is correct.
You can just make that change internally?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsesabika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Anita.
Thank you.
Item F, Commissioner German?
Yes, I, thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize staff to purchase one Chevy Tahoe from Burgess Chevrolet.
Support.
Been moved by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Warren, to authorize staff to purchase one Chevy Tahoe from Burgess Chevrolet. Commissioner German?
Yeah, is there anyone that could actually speak on this? Oh, Chief, oh, I'm sorry. Let's see you over there.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Evening, Chief.
Hey, how you doing, Chief? I know we purchased a couple of these, I believe, last year, was it? And my question is, the need for this vehicle? And it seems like every year, we're always purchasing, you know, a couple cruisers or one of these Chevy Tahos. So, I guess, you know, to keep your department service and active, you know, with, you know, vehicles that is efficient for, for, how many Tahos, I mean, how many of these vehicles do we have in the city for our police department? And what is the main purpose of these? Is there a special need or use for these Tahos? I'm quite sure in the wintertime, they're good, but why the Chevy Tahoe?
Absolutely. As you know, traditionally, we had police cars.
Mm-hmm.
And then, a couple of years ago, we segued into what we call an SUV, which was the Ford Explorers. When we got those, we, the jury was out a little bit on those because of the platform, such as mechanical. They had all-wheel-drive platform, and they've served us well, but not as well as we anticipated. So, as we looked at our police cars and our SUVs, that's the Explorers, we then began looking at the Tahos. And even though they're a little more expensive, they're more spacious cars or the SUV. We feel they're much more durable, and what we've done in the last, a police car used to come into service and go out of service in about 48 months. To be more economical and be more efficient with our money, we raised that to 54 months. And now, with the Tahos, we're going to, again, raise it to 60 months, the vehicle will be in service, which is a year longer than what the cars were. Even though there's an increased cost, we think that they'll be safer, they'll service us better in all four seasons. This will, the Tahos will be assigned to the Patrol Division, and that will be, they'll be on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and many departments are segueing to the Chevy Tahoe for the very reasons I just mentioned.
Okay. Off the top of your head, do you know how many of these vehicles we currently have?
We have none in service right now.
Okay.
I believe there's one or two being built. And this one was purchased because one of our SUVs was to come to the police department. We had a vehicle that was needed at the fire department, and last year, we took that Explorer and moved it to the Fire Marshal, which shortened us for our police services. So, the Tahos were ordered, but of course, everyone's ordering those, so it does take time to get here. Like I said, we have a couple being built. This third one is going to, going to be in the rotation, because we actually have two Ford Crown Vics that have exceeded the months and the miles that are still in service as we wait for the Chevy Tahos to become, to put into service. So, we're putting these cars through a lot of years and miles before we take them out of service.
Okay. And is there a plan to order more of these vehicles within the next couple of years?
Yeah, the plan right now is that we look at our replacement schedule, and as these vehicles come up to be, go out of service, the Tahos will be ordered appropriately at that time to replace those.
Right.
That we anticipate. And as you know, sometimes we'll have a police crash and a vehicle will, let's say, be totaled. Well, then, we scramble a little bit, because we didn't plan on that to happen, and so, that sometimes can throw the count off a little bit, as we actually, as they go into service and come out of service.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions on this item? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garin?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsesabika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item J, Commissioner German?
Was that me, too?
I think it was.
Oh, yeah. Okay, let's see. Okay, I move staff, let's see, oh, let me go down a little bit. Okay. Move for the Planning Commission's recommendations in favor to vacate, no, that's not it. You said J. Okay. I move for staff request to vacate Market Street between Western Avenue and Terrace.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to authorize the vacation of Market Street between Western Avenue and Terrace Street. Commissioner German?
Okay, is there anyone that could actually speak on this?
I'm probably the best one.
Okay, okay.
So, just wanted to know, maybe, maybe, why?
Why?
Why we're doing it?
Yeah. Actually, excuse me, where is that? Because I know I've seen that street somewhere before.
Yeah, it's really, it's just, it's the street that runs down the middle of the Farmer's Market. It connects Terrace and Western Avenue.
Okay.
It's like an L-shaped street, and it really functions as a drive-through for the Farmer's Market on Market Day and access to the parking there on non-event days. So, there are two main reasons why, why we've wanted to close this, and we've closed it a couple of times for events. But, but first of all, there's a lot of vehicle traffic through there, even on Market Days. And the goal was, when you remember, MSU came through and kind of did a study for us and told us how we could improve the flow at the market and improve safety. One of the big things that they pointed out was, they recommended that we get the cars out of there as much as possible on Market Days. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, if you remember, the commission authorized the city to seek a liquor license for events that happen down there at the market. The LCC did not like having a street running essentially through the middle of the event space. And so, they recommended that if we wanted to have that license approved, to be able to, say, have beverages all the way up to the stage, for example, which is on the other side of the street from the building? That the road had to, the road could not be there. So, they're not saying we have to rip up the road or do anything capital-wise, but they wanted the road vacated.
Okay.
And so, we took the request to the Planning Commission, they agreed with the request, and now, here we are, the City Commission asking for the same. I think, you know, on Market Days, you'll see it blocked off, but probably on non-Market Days, you might not necessarily see it blocked off. But it'll be designed not to function as a road anymore. It'll be more like a driveway for the Farmer's Market.
Okay. Makes sense.
I think there was some concern that maybe we'd lose some, some Act 51 dollars, some road dollars for, but I think we did the math on it, and it really was, it's such a small road, it's in such good shape, it's not, it's, there's really not, there's not a worry that there'll be effect on our dollars from the state for road repair and maintenance.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinsesabika?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Public hearings, item A, please.
Request for the establishment of an Industrial Development District at 895 Fourth Street. Planning and Economic Development. Summary of requests: Pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended, Pigeon Hill Brewing Company, LLC, has requested the establishment of an Industrial Development District at 895 Fourth Street. The establishment of the district will allow the company to become eligible for industrial facilities tax abatements. Staff recommendation: Approval of the establishment of the Industrial Development District.
Good evening, Mr. Francick.
Good evening. So, this is a two-step process. We first need to establish the district, and then, we need to vote on the approval of the certificate. And once, once the district is established, they have time to apply, but they're going to be doing that at the same meeting here tonight. This is related to the parcel at 895 Fourth Street, which we recently sold to Pigeon Hill. This will be for their new production facility. We're working closely with them to meet our Form-based code. Everything is going very well. Typically, we grant these standard exemptions on real property for 12 years, but this was part of an agreement we had with the land transaction to approve this for 10 years. And Duana Thompson has also met with them regarding their EEO policy, so I'll let her talk about that.
Very good. Good evening, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I spoke with Joel regarding their IFT, and they have agreed to update in term, we did update their equal opportunity policy, and they have agreed that, you know, if they need assistance with filling positions, that they would contact us. So, we did update the EEO plan, and then, we also updated their demographic numbers. And currently, they are at 18 employees, and they've got a total of 17 that are Asian, which is 94%. They've got one minority, which is 6%. One, they have 10 males, which is 56%, and eight females at 44%.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner German?
Okay, when you say minorities, okay, we're talking, what, that's missing?
They have one Hispanic female.
One Hispanic, okay.
Yes.
Okay. I guess my next question is, why is, I guess, the hiring practices for, or the hiring in that company so low when it comes to minorities?
Well, they only have 18 employees. There's only 18 employees. There's not, I mean, there's not a lot of employees at this particular company.
Okay.
So, I mean, 6% is below, they are aware of that our, our minority goal is 14%. And, but, right now, that's what they have open. And the positions that they've got coming up, they've got 10 new positions that it looks like this is going to create, and so, we anticipate that with those 10 new positions that they'll have some, a higher percentage.
Right. And my concern is, okay, they ask for these abatements, but not meeting the goals when it comes to the EEOC recommendations.
Okay. Would you like, Joel, is he here? Would you like him to speak to that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Good evening.
Can we just get your name and your address, blood type?
Joel Camp, Pigeon Hill Brewing Company at 500 West Western.
Good. Question for Mr. Camp?
Yeah, yeah, how you doing, this camp?
Good.
Yeah, you know, when any business come in front of the commission, and I definitely, when it comes to the EEOC standards, you know, I look at, when they ask for these type of abatements, you know, the inclusion and equity piece when it comes to hiring practice, when it comes to, you know, to different ethnicities. So, you know, I understand that you have a low number of employees there, from what I'm looking at, 18, but, and one minority, which is Hispanic. I guess, is it that different minorities are not interested or not applying for your business? Is that part of the reason why, or couldn't you tell me? Are you just not hiring people of...
No, I mean, we would, we would definitely hire more minorities if they came and applied, but, you know, the job market's pretty tight right now, as the jobs that we create, as we put those out there, there's only, you know, you can only pick from the people who apply, so it's...
Right, right.
Kind of represents the pool of people who are applying to.
Right. And that's my concern.
Yeah.
That's a fair, you know, answer, you know, so I just wanted to know. Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Any other questions? Commissioner Warren?
For these 10 new positions, what qualifications will these employees need? Will, will they need to be trained in brewing, already coming to the table with that, or can they be trained on the job? What qualifications would they need?
These should be able to just come in, and we can train them, it'd be like entry-level positions.
Okay.
We have a pretty decent base of like management-level positions that can actually do the training for, whether it's brewing or sales force.
Okay.
You know, hitting the road and selling vehicles.
Okay. So, is that usually like high school diploma and that kind of stuff?
Yeah. Yep, yeah. For that stuff, we don't really require college degrees or anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for either staff or Mr. Camp? Mr. Commissioner Johnson?
Good evening, Joel. So how do you go about hiring now in terms of posting of jobs, seeking recruits, seeking people to apply? And given, you know, what you heard tonight in your conversations with, with Ms. Thompson, do you foresee making any changes to your approach to how you seek applicants, particularly in mind of ensuring your workforce is reflective of our community? And ideally, from our perspective, as many of our city residents as possible. But do you foresee making changes to, to better align with what the, the expectations that my fellow commissioner have, has expressed?
We'll make changes as deemed necessary, depending on how many positions are opened up or created. If we just need like one or two at a time, we usually just broadcast that out internally and see who knows, if anybody's interested. It's just the easiest, most efficient way. But it's not like, you know, we don't have hundreds of employees, so it just takes a lot of time. We don't really have the resources to have like a human resources department or anything like these bigger companies do. But I guess until we get to that point, we'll just kind of keep doing what we're doing. If there's a block of people that we need to hire, then we'll do more of a general posting, but for now, it's just more efficient with our resources to just kind of go referral based.
Okay. And I can understand the efficiency of that, I suppose, and limited resources to doing more proactive recruitment necessarily, and since you do have so few jobs. But may I just propose that having it be primarily referral-based from current employees, that is so heavily Caucasian already, not reflective of our community, that it may tend, have a tendency to lead to referrals from that same community, is all I'm saying. So just something to keep in mind. You know, obviously, we're not saying, saying, here, you got to have a certain quota, you've got to hire X, Y, Z. But we do, we do like our companies in the city, and we do like our city hall as well, to be reflective of the community, and particularly amongst companies that do receive any kind of abatements or incentives or anything else. So just, just throwing that out there. So, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I, I guess what we're, on the question of jobs as well, I was going to wait till the, actually get to the certificate to inquire about this. But, so the, the district and subsequently its certificate is going to, is dependent upon you hiring 10 new jobs. Presumably, that means retaining the 18, not shifting any jobs from where you're at and moving them to this new facility and counting that as new. This is going to be a net increase of 10 jobs to meet the terms of this agreement.
It's hard to determine really, but over the, over the course of several years, be somewhere in five to 10. So I think we just went with high 10. But I'd say five to 10 new jobs easily between what we need for sales and just packaging, just brewing, logistics, and all that.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
And we just currently, like within the last, I don't know, three months, we hired two more, two new people for the brewing part and promoted from within to somebody to do full-time sales. So we're looking for more servers eventually, and more people to help out with the brewing process. As our sales team rose, we'll add there too.
Very good. Anything else? Roll call, please. It's a motion hearing. Oh, no, I need a, yeah. Do we need to open it? No, we need to close and then, we need to have a public hearing first. That's right.
Oh, yeah, we got to wait for public. Before we can close the hearing.
I got to ask the public for any input. Hi, public! Are there any members of the public that would like to input or address this issue of the industrial development district at 894, 895 Fourth Street, Pigeon Hill? Now I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Warren?
I move we close the public hearing and approve the establishment of the industrial development district at 895 Fourth Street.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, supported by Commissioner Johnson, after the attorney kept me on what I'm supposed to be doing. Thank you, counselor. Close the public hearing and establish an industrial development district at 895 Fourth Street. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzema-Sabinka?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearings, item B.
Request for an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Pigeon Hill Brewing Company LLC, planning and economic development. Summary request pursuant to public Act 198 of 1974 as amended. Pigeon Hill Brewing Company LLC has requested the issuance of an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. The company will be investing $1,250,000 in real property at their new location at 895 Fourth Street. The investment is expected to create up to 10 new jobs. Staff recommendation, approval of the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 10 years for real property.
Mike, anything additional on part two? This is just, we got part one done.
Unless there are any questions.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak regarding the actual certificate for the 10 years for the brewery? Hey, I know you.
Good evening. My name is Daryl Todd, and I am the interim director for Muskegon Area First, and we are the county, countywide economic development agency. So I just wanted to come up tonight and before the commissioners and the mayor, just to lend our support as the countywide economic development agency for this project. We're pleased that this is going to help increase the tax base here and bring in new jobs. So Muskegon Area First is 100 percent behind this effort, so thank you.
Thank you, Daryl.
All right.
Great to see you. Any other members of the public? Commissioner Rinzema-Sabinka?
I move we close the public hearing and approve a resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 10 years for real property for Pigeon Hill Brewing Company LLC at 895 Fourth Street.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rinzema-Sabinka, thoroughly supported by Commissioner Warren, to close the public hearing and approve the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a term of 10 years for real property for Pigeon Hill Brewery at the 895 Fourth Street address. Any comments, discussion on this part? Commissioner Johnson?
I do have a question for Mr. Fransick. I was pleased to hear earlier when you were speaking about the creation of the district that you're working to ensure that the overall project development meets the form-based code. And given that the district is Main Street, and there's an emphasis in the introductory language with regard to the Main Street, that it incorporates and has first-level retail and commercial activity. And that's something that we've talked about before as part of that transaction was, you know, while this is primarily going to be a production and office facility, given what our long-term goals have been, and them even being reiterated with the imagine Muskegon Lake envisioning of having mixed-use development there and the Main Street district having retail, that when we did the transaction, the expectation was going to have, incorporate some retailer commercial and at the very least not preclude it. And that was in addition to the brewing tours themselves, which is a retail component, I suppose, or an aspect of retailing. So I was just wondering, and I know we also have $15,000 from MADC to go towards design work to kind of better accommodate the retail piece of this overall development. And while the IFT is not specific to, to the retail commercial aspect of it, so I am speaking a little tangentially here, but I would welcome maybe a little bit insights or update as to where we're going in that direction of accommodating retail there now and into the future.
Sure. So the, the context area is actually down, the downtown context area, not the Main Street.
Oh, yes.
And that requires mixed uses, so there has to be two different types of uses, which they're having with the brewery and their offices. It's not required. The way the building is designed is to have a retail type of entrance. So if things change in the future from office to, you know, wherever they want to go, that that building would be suitable for a transition to retail. And that's definitely been incorporated in all the plans I've seen so far.
Okay, so.
And they do actually plan on having a small retail section in there, so there would be at least three different uses in the building.
Okay. Retail in addition and beyond the brewery tour, or beyond the tastings?
Yeah, I believe right when you walk in, there's going to be a little clothing type of option we discussed, correct? Yeah.
And at one point, maybe Mr. Camp would like to get back up here and speak to his project, if you, if you wouldn't mind, because you could probably speak to it more authoritatively. But at one point, you had indicated a desire to have a barbershop there as well for, for a retail component. Is that still the, the plan, or has that concept been nixed from your project?
I'd say that's still in the plan. Whether it's a barbershop or not, I don't know. We will have a space as far, you know, as long as, right now, we're kind of in budget crunch mode because it's way more expensive than we thought due to certain things that we need for the brewing part. But assuming we don't have to pinch things down too much, we're going to have a room for like a small rental or something, which could be a barbershop, could be whatever type of use could be, you know, use something that's small, like it'd be maybe 150 square feet or something, which could be, could be one chair, could be something else, I don't know.
Yeah, small shop, which we've already seen just on Western Avenue, the small shop concept and how, how that has succeeded. And so I'm pleased that you're incorporating that from the get-go with your design. And also, the overall design is one that doesn't necessarily preclude retail being accommodated down the road as well. So I am pleased to hear that. So, thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
I think I relayed it last time, but I just have to relay again. This project is creating a lot of buzz, and a lot of people are very excited that Pigeon Hill is not only here and has been here, but is expanding. So congratulations, and we look forward to seeing what's, what's next.
Yeah, what she said. That's good.
We're excited too. We'll get there. It's a project, it's challenging, and it's a process, so.
We got?
A few more gray hairs.
Right, right.
You got to support, Joel.
We're all, we're all excited for it, yeah, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. So we did have the motion, right? Any other comments, questions before we vote?
I'm trying to find it. There it is. So I just want to, you know, thank you for correcting that, Mr. Fransick. It is the downtown context area, not the Main Street context area. And I'm trying to, there we go, come on. Yeah, so, you know, the context area is characterized as a mixed-use building set next to the sidewalk in order to create a street wall and promote commerce and shopping. These buildings contain street-level retail uses with residential office uses on the upper floors. So just going back to, there's emphasis in the language on those context areas, while, while specifically it has to have two different uses to constitute mixed use, so there is language within our form-based code with regard to the downtown context area having and promoting retail, which sounds like they're working on. They're taking strides to that, and we're helping them to do it. But given the envisioning that we've had long-term, particularly with our waterfront or near waterfront, and desire to better connect that with our downtown core retail area, that's why I keep on bringing this up. I want to make sure that this is portions of it being incorporated from the beginning, or at least not being precluded for that inclusion longer term. But I am exceedingly excited with the progress and direction that Pigeon Hill is making. And I echo and completely agree with Commissioner Warren's excitement for Pigeon Hill's progress. And so, and I appreciate your work, Mr. Fransick, with them on moving that forward and making sure we do have some kind of retail component or aspects of that now, and the potential for more into the future to take advantage, especially of that trail that, you know, that we have there and the connections with our downtown and the convention center going up across the street most likely, so.
Thank you. And yeah, it's related to the code. It's, it's very important to make sure that all of the buildings in these form-based codes are set up to be able to hold a retail component, even if they're not envisioning that at first. We have certain areas that do require first-floor active retail type of uses. This is not one of them. But what we try to do in all the buildings down there is to plan for change. And, you know, if a retailer does want to come in there a few years down the road, they're not going to have to make some major modifications to the building, so it'll already be set up for that. And we're glad to see that they're already, from the get-go, looking to incorporate some of that anyways.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rinzema-Sabinka?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garren?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
New business, please.
Item A, second quarter 2017-18 budget reforecast. Finance Director, item removed per staff request. Item B, transition to Glock service firearm, removed per staff request. Item C, concurrence with Housing Board of Appeals notice in order to demolish 496 Octavia Street Garage Only. Summary request, this is to request that the city commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals, that the structure is unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that it be demolished within 30 days. It's further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structure, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder. Or staff may issue infraction tickets to the owner, agent, or responsible party if they do not demolish the structure. Staff recommendation to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals notice to demolish the garage structure only on the property.
Is there anyone here to speak on 496 Octavia Street Garage Only? Any ownership? No? Okay, going to get a motion. Commissioner Johnson?
I move to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals decision to demolish the garage structure only on the property located at 496 Octavia Street.
Second? Been moved by Commissioner German, or Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals decision to demolish the garage structure only at 496 Octavia Street. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rinzema-Sabinka?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garren?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Any other business to bring before the body, Commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, just, I'm going to pull this up real quick. With regard to the, the ban on overnight parking, you know, it's been lifted, enforcement has been lifted a couple, few days early. And I was just wondering, and now the ban on terrace parking has been reinstated, or actually technically doesn't get reinstated until after the 28th. But I was just wondering if enforcement-wise, our officers are going to have kind of a grace period, like we did when the, the ban goes into effect on the beginning of the, the season in December. We put out a red ticket saying, hey, you can't be parking in the street, we're not finding you yet, but just an FYI. Do we have the same approach in this transition at the end of the parking ban, where you now can park in the street, you can't park on the terrace? Are we going to have a little grace period where we're just informing people and reminding them, hey, this is now in effect, you can't park on the terrace, we're not going to find you yet, but FYI, you will be fined if you don't stop parking on the terrace?
Right. You know, we lifted the ban a little bit early because obviously, we didn't see any type of significant or any snow in sight. We didn't even see 30-degree temperatures in sight. So we did lift the ban, and we, we weren't ticketing for the 2 to 6. We also weren't ticketing for parking on the terrace or the front side yard. March 1st, generally, what we do is we start ticketing if you're parked on the terrace and on the front side yard after March 1st. It gives a few, a few people a couple of days to adjust to that. And we've never done the warnings like we have when we actually enter the winter parking ban. If that answers your question.
Okay. It does. Do we have the capability for like in the first week of providing those warnings?
Certainly.
Okay.
If the commission would like that, we certainly can give a grace period of warnings until we feel people have adjusted to the, you know, like back to normal, where they cannot park on the terrace or the front side yard.
Yeah.
It's not a problem.
Okay. Because I think that'd be, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I think that'd be a, you know, resident-friendly initiative, just to give a little grace period when we transition in and out of it. And we're already doing it transitioning into it. I don't see why we wouldn't do it transitioning out of it. I know that, you know, MLive reported on it, and not everyone's reading MLive, or not necessarily everyone's getting the, the city's Facebook posts on it. So if, if we could have that, just a short grace period to, to let our residents know, it doesn't feel like we're overbearing and, you know, they, they know that, that the shift has changed, and they can't park on the terrace. I don't know if the commission is opposed to that, or Commissioners are okay with that short grace period?
It's not an overburden on staff?
Absolutely not. We, we, we have shift briefings at the beginning of each shift. It's very easy to communicate with our officers, like we did last Friday night when we lifted this. Within a very, very short period, they were aware that we had actually rescinded the ban and they did not issue tickets. And if there are a few that actually had a problem, just come in and see me. And there again, we can easily tell our officers a period of a week or two till maybe, let's say, March 15th or whatever date you'd like. We could just have them either issue the red violations or just give verbal warnings or just, you know, just do not issue tickets.
I'd give a week. I wouldn't give an extended period.
Okay.
People should be fairly aware as it is. You know, we go through this every year.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners?
Well, I hope you didn't jinx it.
Well, there's going to be snow. There's going to be snow.
Thursday night, snow all night long.
That's after February 28th.
Okay. Okay. It's going to be sunny until Sunday. Monday a chance. Okay, okay. Never mind.
We think there'll be snow at some point.
Yes. Michigan anyway. There's nothing else from the commission? Time for a public input. Members of the community are invited up to address the commission. Give them three minutes unless I'm feeling necessarily magnanimous and give you three and a half minutes or so. But anyway, hey, Mike, you got a slip here.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Come on up, give your name and address and I'll start the clock and you can talk...
Michael Hollison, 903 Turner Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Just kind of curious, have any of you done very much work with your website for when it comes to like paying bills, like taxes?
I have not.
Because when I went to pay my taxes a few weeks ago, to get into the pay portal, I had to log out and log back in like four or five different times before it would finally let me get to the portal so I could pay my taxes. Is there some way we can get them to look at that, maybe simplify it a little bit better than what we're going through right now? Because it's like you got to go through four stages to be able to get to the pay port. So, that's my two cents.
We can have them look at it, see what's going on.
Yeah, we can certainly ask the computer guys.
Okay.
And whomever else about that and we'll certainly get an answer for you.
Okay. And as you can see, Publishers Clearinghouse did not show up, so I'm still here.
I'm gone.
See you in two weeks.
I wish you would. I want to go to Disney World.
Me too.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission at this time?
Thanks, you thank you for letting me speak here. My name is Jesus Peña. I live at 1851 Walnut Street. And first of all, I'd like to thank every one of you for your hard work and all the tough decisions that you make to help the city grow. And in my, you know, I feel strongly that Muskegon remains a great city to live, work, raise a family, and retire, too. I have three issues I'd just like to ask for your help with and hopefully the citizens need your help as well. The three are sidewalk, snow removal ordinance. The second one is the LED streetlights. And the third one is the big decision this Friday from the DEQ about the critical dunes. The first one, the, and hopefully just the first two, just if you can take under advisement that we don't, maybe you can conclude it in the minutes next month. The third one, though, we need to act fast. The first sidewalks, though, we do need, children, you know, from the schools are still going to and from schools through this obstacle of sidewalks not being shoveled. And I went through it with my kids when they were young. Now I've got grandkids and I'm taking them to school and the issue still remains. And I've noticed, you know, the assessments downtown business district, we have snow removal contractors now. And I'm not asking for that at all for what's going on in the rest of the city. I'm just asking for the time and effort and resources that you've used for the city assessment downtown to, you know, get out there to the public and just make them aware or help them be aware that this ordinance exists to help not only kids, but we got a lot of runners, you know, throughout the city. The other one, LED lights. The taxpayers have paid two years now and I'm assuming it amounts to about half a million dollars. And we could use an update and see where, where does this put us at with that money? Any changes? Because, you know, I realize, you know, September 2016, the light bill for the streetlights was like $43,000. And are we encroaching a million dollars yet? So we could use an update on that and what do we got to show for our two payments already? Another third one, of course, is the critical dunes. The DEQ is going to make a big decision this Friday or maybe a little after. This one hits home to me because, first of all, I want to know about the amendment and the adoption that we passed. Were we correct on the adoption of the 2310 ordinance? Because 2310, I believe, was wind turbines. And I don't know if the critical dune one was under land disturbances, that which would be 2302. So I don't know if that needs to be changed. It still hasn't been changed in the ordinance on the webpage. So the other one was a city letter in support of the critical dune being removed by Dampino Development. And I'm just kind of curious if the criteria, if there's any, if all were met in sending out this letter of support to the DEQ. Because usually in planning, you know, we have to, you know, sometimes there's a study, a water runoff, unstable ground, you know, cutting through a dune, you're going to create unstable for the rest of the dune, possibly. I don't know if any criteria was needed to make that support. The other one, oh yeah, I was going to ask too about are there other teams in the commission? I think there's the Open Space Conservation District that also gives support on trying to help the dunes out. There's also the Historical District that helps preserve things. I know the area we're talking about is not technically historical, but, you know, the state of Michigan has put us a marker on the intersection up where the area is going to be constructed, that it is a historic mark. So I'm asking the commission if they can retract this support letter before Friday, if that's possible, or at least consider the items I just mentioned. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jesus. I'll talk to you. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, Commissioner Rinsama-Sabika? Well, Commissioner Johnson?
I was wondering perhaps if we could have our Municipal Services Director provide an update on the LED since she seems to be fairly well-versed on this. She shared some information with us recently more than once. And so I don't think I'm putting you on the spot to speak on this issue. If you can just give an update to the commission as well as to this gentleman's question with regard to the LEDs conversion.
Sure. We are nearing completion of Phase 1. It is, last I heard from Consumers Power, we were about 85% done. There are some poles that require some concrete work and so, of course, we needed to wait for weather to cooperate before we could, we could address those. There were some questions, I'm not sure if it was the last commission meeting or the work session, about how the brightness is determined. And Consumers Energy does have a program that they use to determine the lumens, I think is the correct term, the light output for the LED fixtures. And so the idea is to match what currently exists with our, the lighting that we currently have. Maybe Beth could speak to how much has come, the funding that's come in so far. I can't really speak to that. But my understanding is that we are collecting money over approximately 10 years and we hope to replace all of the lighting in the city within five. So we will be working with Consumers Energy in the near future to determine what the second phase should be. Other questions?
If you could just maybe just elaborate a little bit on where we started with Phase 1?
Sure.
If this gentleman or anyone else is interested in checking it out, that, you know, they can go to that area?
I actually have the map here. It, the first phase goes from approximately Spring to Ninth Street and is between Muskegon and Shoreline Drive.
So you should be able to walk out City Hall here and take a look at some of the new lighting on Muskegon, because I think I've noticed those ones are done right in front of City Hall.
Right. I have seen Consumers Energy trucks out on terrace while I'm sitting in my office at City Hall, so.
Go ahead, Jesus.
Just a quick question. Lights they've mentioned near Shoreline Drive, those are newer ones, not the existing or test lights that were installed prior to these. Are they...
The conversion.
These are converted?
I don't know the details on when things were installed, especially on Shoreline, because that's M.D.A. right away. So I don't know the details on how old fixtures are.
All right.
I don't know if somebody else can speak to that.
I'm not sure exactly which ones he's thinking of, but there were some city-owned lights, I think, out there in that area and on Western Avenue and I think Terrace Point that we replaced as LEDs with grant money about maybe two years ago. And so these are different lights. Those ones, we're not replacing. Those ones were kind of ahead of the curve on the rest of them. And the reason why we did pick this area, we were trying to pick an area that was less residential intensive so that people could have some time seeing the lights, living in the lights and understanding what they're going to look like, because they're not going to be as yellow as the lights are used to. And so that we could kind of pivot if we needed to pivot, if we thought that maybe the lumens weren't enough or the color temperature was too much or too little before we got deep into the neighborhoods and had a problem with people, you know, trying to sleep and stuff like that. So the goal is hopefully people get out there and see these and live with these and experience them over the next few months so we can, so we can hear any feedback that we need to hear before we start moving into Bluffton or any of the other neighborhoods.
Right. And some of the information that Consumers has shared is that these LED fixtures have a lot less light pollution, that the light is directed downward a lot more. And it's, it actually can cast farther than the old style lights. The old style lights really kind of pooled right underneath the fixture. So there's some, quite a few benefits to the LEDs.
Maybe we can do some type of a update for the website.
Okay.
You know, of some sort. Hey, Ben?
I'm sure.
Maybe that'd be a good article, an update about the, about the process. Commissioner Turnquist?
So roughly, we're 20% through the job.
Yeah.
And did I understand we have not selected Area 2 yet?
That's correct.
Correct.
And are all, if, does each area cover about, encompass about 20% of the city?
I would say similar, I would say somewhere around 20%. The phases, they weren't just based on the number of light fixtures, but maybe the type of light fixtures. So some of them, we'll say 20%, we're talking 20% of the value. So we broke up the cost into five, you know, into five payments essentially. So some of them that have more expensive fixtures or bigger fixtures or fixtures that are more costly, then we'll see less fixtures replaced, you know, with that same amount of money.
So it's going to take five years to complete the job?
That's the plan.
Here's in last conversation, we, five years to do the job, you know, as the assessments come in, but the, we've been assessed over a 10-year period in some ways to make it less onerous on us on an annual basis for that assessment.
And again, we expect it to be a bit of a fluid process. As houses are sold, the buyer or the seller will invoke the whole, the whole 10-year assessment to be paid at the time of the sale. So for example, all the houses we've sold in Midtown Square, all the houses that have sold in Terrace Point, they've essentially made their full, the rest of their 10-year payment as part of the closing of those properties. And so if we, and if we see that we're collecting more, again, we can pivot it and make, make maybe Phase 2 a little bit bigger or Phase 3 a little bit bigger. But the goal is to, is to collect it over 10 years, but some, in some instances, we might find that certain amounts of it will be paid in less than 10 years. But there's just no telling when, when or how many houses or properties will sell in a given year. If we have a lot of turnover, we might be able to see it, you know, escalate a little bit more.
Any other questions for the director? Okay, thank you.
Sir?
Thank you.
Anything else, commissioners? If not, seeing as all the vice mires in here, I would just like to take the honors.
I move we adjourn.
Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rinsama-Sabiga, seconded by Commissioner Johnson to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.